Next Tuesday morning, it starts at eight o'clock.
All right.
Twenty first?
No, not true.
It's way down the town, so.
It's the third Tuesday.
It's next week.
You're right. Twenty, I said twenty, it's the twenty.
Good evening, Washington Courthouse, it is seven thirty P M on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, time for the first regular meeting of this month. At this time, I will offer the invocation, Mr. Blair will lead us in pledge. And if you can stand. Dear God, we just give you all the praise for helping us to establish a community that is such a great place to live, to raise families, to work. And God, we just pray that as a city council, we can make decisions that keep this community a great place to be. God, we also give you all the praise and glory for helping our country to win a very difficult independence and establish a democracy that is the showplace for the world. And God, we just pray as we approach another election time that you help us as a country to be a democracy, to be people who understand that if you want a country to work, you have to work together. So, God, I just ask that you help us keep that in mind. At this time, God, again, we just pray for our council, for all the people in our community, for the service groups that we have working so hard in our community. And we just ask that you keep all of us safe. We pray all these things in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. We got through that pretty well.
Made it through.
Uh, roll call, Kelly.
Johnson. Sorry, Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from our regular meeting, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Does anybody see any changes? I didn't, but sometimes I miss things. And if not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that would accept the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Communications, Mr. Denon?
None.
Council committees, first is Economic Strategies and Cooperation, and Mr. Schultz, I believe you headed up that meeting, go for it.
I'll take care of it. The Economic Strategy and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, July the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at five P M. Mr. Steve Schultz presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, Economic Development Director, Jody Langley, Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. Mark Pitstick, City Attorney, Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager. The first, number one, is the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The administration advised the committee of open projects. Number two, the administration benefited from an update on the B R and E meeting that have been held. Number three, the committee benefited from a review regarding downtown businesses. Number four, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the downtown area. Number five, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Mrs. Baker noted potential interest at the Washington Center. Number six, Mrs. Baker noted discussion continued with small nations organization and that a visit has been tentatively scheduled for August the sixteenth. Number seven, the committee benefited from a presentation of the Joint Economic Development Website. Number eight, the administration noted upcoming community projects and events such as the Farm to Fork Event, Art on the Square Event, and Scarecrow Festival. Number nine, the administration explained an option for opportunities to use residential TIF funding with upcoming development. The committee recommended continued development of the question. Number ten, the administration requested permission to utilize Anchor and Solder Productions for videogram, graphing, to help promote the community. Mrs. Baker presented completed videos and promoted downtown and Scarecrow Festival. The committee recommended that discussion continue regarding entering into an agreement to continue service with Anchor and Solder Productions. Respectfully submitted, Steve Schultz, Vice Chairperson, Economic Strategy and Cooperation Committee, and Mrs. Kelly Florida, Report Reporting Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions, discussions, et cetera? And if none, does someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Finance and Personnel, Mr. Christman.
Thank you. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. I presided, those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, Council Clown, Mr. Jim Blair, Council Member, Caleb Johnson, Council Member, Sylvia Call, Council Member, Mr. Dale Lynch, Council Chairperson, Mr. Ron Sockman, Finance Director, Mr. Jody Langley, Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. Mark Pitstick, City Attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager, left off the list, but last but not least, Mr. Ted Hawke.
He was left off the list.
Number one, the committee benefited from a report of a statement of cash for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Number two, the committee benefited from a report of the investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. Number three, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council to enter into a public defender agreement with Fayette County. The committee reviewed the Central Ohio Heath Care, must be Health, right?
Health.
Okay, healthcare consortium cost summary. Number five, the committee benefited from a review of the multiple worksite development of labor reports. Number six, the committee noted that applications were received for an open dispatch position at the police department. Number seven, the administration noted that a drug-free workplace seminar for employees and supervisors would be held in August. The committee noted that the administration had conducted disciplinary training with supervisors. Number nine, the administration reported that a grievance, uh, grievance from the police department had been reviewed. Number ten, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to the committee reflecting an update to the Downtown Maintenance Code. Number eleven, the committee discussed, in length, the topic of fireworks. The committee recommended that a survey be distributed regarding the subject and that the draft ordinance be reviewed at the next service of the Safety and Recreation Committee. Respectfully submitted by, uh, no. Recorded my assist.
Recorded by, no.
Recorded my basis, Caleb.
Okay. Any, beside those corrections that Jim made, any other comments or questions? Does someone want to make a motion to accept?
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept it as written.
Second.
Except for the changes.
Okay, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, you are, oh, wait a minute, before you do, I just want to make a mention. Again, we have minutes from the Vital, uh, Downtown Revitalization Task Force. I have trouble remembering vitality. Uh, and again, uh, Mr. Blair, as I mentioned earlier, I very much appreciate what's going on with that committee. And, um, I know you're meeting with the group this week, and so keep up the good work. It's going well. I'm pleased.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blair.
That's okay.
You have a good committee.
Good, yes, sir. And I'm glad we formed that committee, by the way. Now, Mr. Denon. You're up.
Would like to express condolences to the family of Ed Halt. Ed was a incredibly dedicated member of the Washington Fire Department for many years. Uh, a lot of people in the community are probably more, uh, familiar with Ed through his second career with the radio station, where he could be heard singing many a morning. Uh, he was a member of the Rotary Club and was, was just a, a wonderful person that, that we will miss, that continued, uh, even in advanced years to, uh, contribute to the community and give of himself, and it is a sad day indeed. Uh, we're going to talk about new legislation, and then I'll go down the list of some things I wanted to point out. Uh, you got a resolution that allows us to contract with Ross Ca, uh, for firms, what we're doing with Ross County, for the building permits. Also talked with Craig at the county, and now they have another person, there's an interest there also. So, the next step, unless anybody has an objection, is I'll go over and talk to the commissioners about how they feel about that. Uh, resolution authorizing just agency manager of the City of Washington Corse to enter agreement with the Fayette County Commissioners for the provision of public defender services. Ted's favorite piece of legislation that we bring all year. And an ordinance amending, uh, the Downtown Maintenance Code for historic buildings that clarifies one little area, it changes about three words when it concerns broken windows. Uh, and then you have a pit stick special and ordinance prohibiting parking motor vehicles on lawns. Couple of things to highlight. Friday, we have the Small Nation Visit, and we planned that all out and have that all set up and ready to go. Uh, and we really look forward to that. That is something that I've been very pleased that we moved forward with, something that was very important to me, uh, personally, and I think for the future of the community. I think that'd be very helpful. Periodically around town, you'll notice that we'll have some street closures. Uh, that is where they are painting streets. Now, we used to do that a little bit differently. Uh, the way we do it now is much safer for the people doing the work. And quite honestly, it, it eliminates the occasional issue we'd have when paint would get places it shouldn't get, uh, like other people's cars. Uh, so that's just a little bit safer way to do it, and it works that well for the street department, and it's a very temporary street closure for like a block when they do that. They'll close off a little area, paint it, move on. Uh, fireworks legislation, we have had a draft that has circulated back and forth between, uh, myself, Mr. Pitstick, and Police Department, and the Fire Department, and probably will be able to bring that to you, to your next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. And we'll have that all worked out about how we think that ought to work. Everybody has contributed to that, and it has been interesting and educational. Uh, let's word it that way. Uh, but it has been, we've worked very hard on that. That survey that the amendments mentioned, we put together a survey, and that has gone out, and I had, oh, police and fire look at it, uh, before we started to include that with utility bills, and they were quite fine. It's very simple and straightforward. Uh, it's a limited number of questions, it's easy for people to respond to, and not engage how they feel about fireworks and the level of importance they attach to the issue. Uh, so we will get some feedback from that. A couple of things, uh, that I wanted to stress from committee. You know, we were really worried about well number three when we had to drill down some four hundred feet. And we were very concerned about, oh, how, uh, successful an investment that would be, especially after we got down there, the initial feedback wasn't horribly positive. Uh, however, uh, it looks like well three, you'll be able to reliably get two hundred gallons a minute out of it. Uh, and it doesn't appear to have a hugely negative impact on well one and two, uh, nor do well one and two appear to have a horribly negative impact on well number three, because well three is much deeper than one and two. We're talking about those wells out by the Y M C A, you see that pipe. Their production is that pipe that is pushing water into the reservoir. You, you see it on that one side towards the Y M C A. Uh, that means roughly you'd be able to put a million gallons a day into the reservoir, which is exceptionally good news. Uh, also seventeen feet for this time of year, that's very good. Uh, we started out the water, or the year, uh, lip and tippin' full, and for this time of year, that, that's really good. I've seen it much, much worse than that. So, we're very pleased about that, because you've actually been thrown, I don't know how the farming community realizes it, but it's incredibly dry out there. And you look at that creek, and it's, there's not a whole lot to it. Uh, that does give us some opportunities, like we talked about. Uh, on Glen Avenue, we'll be able to get back into the creek and pull out a lot of that junk that has accumulated over there. Uh, Gary explained to you, a lot of it's dead ash trees. But you just have trees and junk that we need to pull out of there before you end up with a, a problem. Uh, and it's a nice, one, you don't tear up people's lawns nearly as bad, and two, it's easy to get to right now. So, we want to get in there, get that out. Nearly all the residents responded to the letter they sent. We've got a couple that haven't, so they might get excited with us, but there's, you really need to go out, we need to get that done. So, if somebody does get excited about it, they're more than welcome to come in, talk to us, and we will explain to them in great detail what we are doing, but they ought to have understood that from the letter. Uh, but we'll get that done, moving along.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Denon. Mr. Sockman, you got anything this evening? We'll hear from you next meeting. Mr. Pitstick?
The only thing that we're doing in the last couple of days is billing for yards. So, we're just trying to catch up, get all the yards built to their respective homeowners.
Well, with not much rain, the grass doesn't grow as much. All right. Mrs. Ford, we have a clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fourth counsel is a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new liquor permit, a D five liquor permit, from Level Up Arcade LLC, located at two oh two East Port Street, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. Uh, their request was reviewed by the Chief of Police with no objections. Does counsel have any objections to this request?
I would like to make a motion that we request a hearing on the advisability of issuing the permit.
I will second the motion.
And request that the hearing be held in our county seat. I think, I, I, that in that arcade, they, uh, they cater to minors, right?
Wait, wait, we had a second, did you hear that, Kelly?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay. I, I think that that establishment caters to minors in the arcade, and I, I don't think that would be a good idea to have alcohol there. And, uh, this report doesn't even name who the owner is, who that is going to.
Things changed evidently, you can't get it.
So, I.
Mark, what kind of liquor license is that? Can you tell me?
D, D five.
Yeah. Is that what it is, Kelly?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
It's a D five.
What's that mean?
It means basically that they have, they can sell beer, wine, and liquor up, up through, I think, uh, two thirty in the morning. So, they, it's, it's table, it's table. So, just like you would at, uh, Rusty Cave or any, but anyplace like that.
Yeah, we used to call that a nightclub license.
They have a nightclub license.
More common.
And that D five also says they can have an outside?
Well, I don't think it says that, but I think that they have to have seating.
Outside.
Not, not necessarily outside.
Okay, okay, because they have that little.
They can have seating outside. That's, that's something completely different, that's not included in the license.
Okay.
But, Mark, would it be correct to say if you had outdoor seating, it has to be contained in some way?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It has to be contained.
Okay.
Enclosed.
Enclosed.
Do they have to get this license from somebody else, or is this an extra license?
They've applied to the state of Ohio. Uh, typically, there's a waiting list for a D five, so they've come up on the list, and they've, uh, been essentially granted it by the, the, the state. Now, you have the opportunity, if you want to, to request the hearing. Uh, that information is what the Division of Liquor Control gives us, that, that's everything that's there. Uh, so, if you want to, you can request the hearing. Now, Mark, they cannot, help me out here. You can't object to the issuing the permit, there's specific reasons in objection to alcohol is not one of them, as I recall.
That's correct. It has to do with zoning, parking, things like that, that would affect the safety of, of the people going in and out. Also, would be, how, how close to, are they to schools, uh, churches, et cetera, and whether or not they meet that criteria? Playgrounds.
So, well, that's pretty close to a playground, being an arcade, and, and so if you have minors going in there, is that, that's okay?
It's okay if their parents take them in. It's the same thing that happens at Rusty Cave, same in the rest.
Same thing.
Ted, in answer to your, your, uh, about the children, unless the plans have changed, I think the owner is going to move all the machines upstairs in that old apartment and have a restaurant downstairs. So, doesn't mean the children can't eat down there if they're parents, but I would think if they're going there for games, they'll be upstairs, unless the plans change. I'm, I don't have anything to do with it, I just heard about it, so.
So, does nobody know who the owner is?
All I have, all I have here tonight is what she said on the paper, I don't have to.
It's the same owner as there before, that, uh, well, I can't think right now.
Isn't it KK's grub home?
Yes.
I don't know her name.
What would the police chief investigate if we don't have that on the?
They would be given whatever, whatever the Liquor Control Board wants to give, whatever information, and they would investigate that.
That, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, if, if they're supposed to be in, if you're supposed to check it out and investigate it and get a background check, if.
Well, they must, the liquor people must have the background, know who it is, so they can check the background. We just don't know.
We don't have that information, it wasn't provided to us.
Ted, if you would like, regardless of how the motion pans out, how about, uh, we'll be happy to arrange, uh, a meeting, and we'll just sit down and take a little stroll down the street and talk to them about what their plans are down there. But I believe it's what Mr. Christman explained to you.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. I'd like to talk to the Liquor Commission, too, see what, what they base their decisions on.
Okay. Um, if you vote yes, you're voting for a hearing. If you vote no, you're voting for not hearing. Kelly, can you do a roll call, please?
I can. Johnson?
No.
Schultz?
No.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
Noun.
Christman?
No.
Hawke?
Yes.
And Lynch?
No. So, I believe that failed. Okay. Was that it, Kelly?
It is, thank you.
We're moving on then to local residents, and we have one gentleman who wants to speak. If you would come up, state your name and your address for the record.
Richard.
And tell us what you're here for.
Richard Davis, uh, twenty-three forty-two State Route thirty-eighth, Washington Courthouse, which is Union Township. The reason I'm here, we had a structural fire July twenty-sixth, which is covered under Western Fire Department, which they ran out of water, which I was not very happy. Union Township pays a pretty good chunk of money to Western F D, and I understand there's no tanker, which is critical for a rural fire. And I understand there's a new one been ordered, which mutual aid's a good thing, but the timeframe, I was on Bloomberg for ten years. You know, you get out, get called out in the middle of the night, three or four o'clock on. The time it takes for them to show up is an issue. My concern is what's the option of leasing a tanker or renting one until the new one gets here? Uh, Mr. Downing answered a bunch of my concerns, and, uh, but I've talked to Mr. Denon, Mr. Hawke, and Mr. Christman, but I'm just kind of concerned what's going to happen till that thing gets here.
Okay. Mr. Denon, do you want to, do we need to?
It's not a, not a good feeling when you've got planes shooting out of your house thirty feet in the air, and an eight-year-old granddaughter standing here screaming, and the water quits rolling, which to me, that's unacceptable.
Okay. Um, do you need Chief Downing to comment, or do you want to say something, or Jody?
Well, if it's about the, the fire itself, I mean, Tim is the one that, that really needs to talk to you about that, because he can do it a lot more.
Well, and there he is.
There he is.
I, I do understand Mr. Davis's concerns, I acknowledge those, as far as we had the conversation. I was like, uh, you know, I said, uh, Tuesday night, I had a conversation a while ago. The best course of action is, I believe, what we've done, and in light of this situation, we were using mutual aid prior to just mutual aid, which means, if we understand mutual aid, that is, we leave the building, and we determine that we need assistance, we then request it. That's how mutual aid works. Automatic aid is, we are going somewhere, the other departments are automatically toned to show up with us. Um, so what I've done in this past week is contacted all of our surrounding departments and asked them, rather than having to call for their help for any structural or field fire in Union Township, if we can just have them respond automatically with a tanker. They've agreed to do so. Also, we spoke to Sheriff's Department, because it involves a lot more than just, hey, firefighters feel like doing this. We have talked to other agencies, we talked to Sheriff's Department, who does the toning for our, for our runs on the county, and they agreed to keep in their system the locations and the closest available, so they would know who could respond to what areas of the city and or township the fastest, and they will tone the appropriate departments to automatically respond with this, with a tanker. In my opinion, that is the best course of action at this time. Uh, renting or leasing a vehicle for a year, for the amount of time that we go into the township, I don't know that you're going to get the cost-benefit analysis, which sounds very cold, which I'm looking at, and I do apologize for sounding cold, but I'm trying to look at things from an administrative point of view as well and be physically responsible. Uh, also, if we rent a tanker, this is where a big difference comes in. A tanker is just that, it is a truck that hauls water. What we have, we either Washington Courthouse firefighters refer to a tanker as. What we have, and we either watch in courthouse firefighters refer to a tanker as a tanker pumper. That's what we had, that's what we ordered. It's a combination fire engine that carries twenty-five hundred gallons of water or, or a tank, tanker. Um, so you'll hear us refer to it as a tanker, but technically, it's a tanker pumper. And that's what we truly need. That's what's been ordered, and that's what's coming. We respond with three to four people at a time. If we divide those people up, more often than not, we have three people on shift, because that's our minimum staffing level. And we have a lot of old guys like me that take vacations. Um, so a lot of time, we respond with three people to a call, an initial, our initial response. If we divide them up and put one person in a tanker and two people in an engine, now they're gonna be spending more time setting up a tanker and the water supply to that engine and less time fighting the fire in the most crucial moments of that fire, which is right when we arrive. It will actually slow us down and make us less efficient. By arriving with that engine and having a tanker already on, on its way, having our team begin an initial fire attack as soon and as early as possible, that's the most efficient that we can offer. It's not an ideal situation, and I acknowledge it's not an ideal situation, but it's the absolute best that we can offer right now. If we just park a tanker in the building, that's going to actually reduce our efficiency. Our only other option, if we, other than splitting our crew, would be to have the engine respond and the next incoming firefighters that respond to a call back, which is when we tone the radios for help at our scene or station, full-time personnel respond to the station, pay call personnel respond to the scene. Our full-time personnel responding to the station could then take the tanker out, but now it could be delayed by as much as ten to twenty minutes. So that would slow us down even more, making it less efficient. Our current situation right now, what we have as of this week, by having an automatic aid set up with all of our departments around us to just respond with a tanker to any fire that we have in the township, whether it be structured fire or field fire, then that, that's the most ideal that we can open at this time. The best situation will be once our tanker pumper combination arrives. Once, once the new engine one forty arrives, that's gonna be the best that we can offer. Uh, I do, I, I do feel for Mr. Davis. I really do. I, I don't like when we have dissatisfied customers, because I truly believe that we need to offer the best service possible. And we were following everything we knew to follow by saying, hey, we're gonna mutual aid, mutual aid, mutual aid, because that's what we go by is mutual aid. We ask them for help to help us, and my guys have been asking for tankers as they leave the building, to make sure we have tankers at fire scenes. Um, but in light of what happened, we said, maybe we can save a couple of moments by going out and asking for automatic aid, which that's asking a lot of these surrounding departments. That's really asking them to just be like, every time we go somewhere, they're just automatically, you have to get up and come with us. Uh, and that's asking a lot of those folks, and they're willing to do it. So I'm, I'm very grateful to our surrounding departments for doing that. But as of right now, until our new vehicle arrives, I think that's the best course of action, is just continue going that direction.
So Chief, to, to summarize, is it correct to say that we had a procedure before? In responding to this incident, we acknowledged that there was a shortcoming, and that since then, you have worked with the other departments, uh, to rectify that and to fix that, so that what Mr. Davis is bringing to us today, what the, the trustees have brought to us today, it will not happen again.
Oh, there's no guarantee. Uh, to, to answer and say that it would be a shortcoming would be, I think, I don't think shortcoming is the right word. I think we're off, we're offering the best services we had available to us, mutual aid, because we use mutual aid. Uh, mutual aid is, like I said, we ask, they come, they ask, we go. To try to enhance and improve things, we did take steps to try to enhance and improve things by doing the automatic aid. It will only save moments. Uh, the, the difference between automatic and mutual aid is literally, instead of my guys putting their gear on, hopping the truck and asking for the next available tanker, which is less than sixty seconds, maybe ninety seconds at the very most, uh, now within a ninety seconds, sixty seconds or so, they'll be having to tone for the additional tanker. So it's not saving more than a minute, really, uh, of time.
So this isn't a situation where what happened was, is that whenever, uh, uh, the tanker that was out there that ran out of water, it's not a situation where we've been waited an additional, let's say, eight, ten, fifteen minutes or whatever, because of our not notifying them right away?
No, no. Our guys notified the additional, our agencies as they were leaving the building, and they're leaving our building to head out there.
Who has the biggest tanker right now in the county?
That's a very good question. I want to say New Holland with three thousand gallons, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. There are several.
Do you contact New Holland? Would you contact the one that has the biggest tanker when you go to the county?
No. I contact the closest tanker, the closest available.
And the closest tanker's what, how many gallons?
It depends on where we're going. It all depends on what direction we go. That's gonna make the difference as to what tanker's coming in our direction. Uh, if I head towards Jeffersonville, Jeffersonville's gonna respond with a tanker. If I head towards Bloomingburg, we'll be calling Bloomingburg. If we're heading towards New Holland, we'll be contacting New Holland for assistance.
So there's several tankers around the trap?
Everybody around us has tankers.
Okay.
And we have, we've actually run tests. When, when one forty was working, we've run tests with the entire county, and we can, we can run well over two hundred fifty gallons per minute for about ten hours. We, we made the test, it was two hours, and we met that. We even were able to pump a thousand gallons a minute for about thirty minutes, I believe, when we, we tested this, to see if we could keep it going. And with the relationship we have with all of our surrounding departments, we actually have, uh, we can produce a lot of water very quickly.
Do we have an ETA on our new tanker?
I expect this time next year, no later than October.
Okay.
Do you wanna add something, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Tim, if I heard you right, if we have a tanker and it's dispatched at the same time, still, we're gonna have three people?
Our response with our truck, if we, our response is three to four people.
You have three, you have three people on duty?
Three to four people on our duty crew.
If, without a tanker?
Without a tanker.
If you have the tanker, will, will you have four people on duty once a tanker comes?
No, it's only three to four people responding. Now, we do request additional help at the scene, so we do call for our pay call personnel to go to the scene. Uh, in the case, in this case, by calling for another outside agency to bring a tanker, they're bringing personnel.
They're bringing two or three people.
Yeah, they're bringing at least two people with them usually. So we are getting additional help at the scene, which is definitely beneficial to all of us. Um, once we have our vehicle in place, that's, like I said, it's specifically just for the use of Union Township, that's what we, that's what we're getting it for, it's protecting Union Township.
But you only still have three people?
Still three to four people, yeah, maximum four on a duty crew. Uh, three most of the time, maximum four. Yes. And now, when they respond, they would then be calling for our, our pay call personnel to respond to the scene, and.
That's where your extra help comes in.
There are extra help, yes.
So you just have a driver, a commuting, or a captain or whatever?
An officer, then a firefighter. Yeah. So, yeah, we had, it was, if you added a tanker to our current situation, we have two drivers and an officer.
Correct.
Uh, so by just doing what we're doing now, which is contacting the others to come in for help, we ended up with our three there, and we ended up with two more coming with a tanker. One of which offered the tanker, another one will join our firefighters in, in the firefighting activities. So it's, like I said, it's currently the best scenario that we've come up with.
How, how big is our tanker, the one we got on order?
The one on order is two thousand five hundred gallons of water.
I have another question. Yeah, are you, are you able to use, say, in, in the county, I have a, a swimming pool. Are you able to draw out of that pool?
People talk about it. We've even contemplated those ideas and spoke about ourselves, saying, look for pools that, where you have good foundations, an in-ground pool, something we can, we can throw our drafting, uh, tools into. But our hoses, our, so our suction hoses are very big, heavy, five-inch, six-inch hoses, depending what truck it's on, really. Um, and then those hoses, ones that are on the water, they have a lot of weight to them. This, the standard above-ground pool will not support the weight of those hoses. So if it collapses.
It collapses to your lungs.
It doesn't matter how much water the pool holds, all that water's just on the ground now and doing no good. So it won't help us. Now, an in-ground pool, if we can get close to it, most of those have fences around, most pools have fences around them anyway, and they should. Um, but if we can get close to it, potentially to an in-ground pool, but I, I wouldn't gamble on it. I certainly wouldn't bet on. And to stop this from happening, I have been on fire scene, I've been doing this a very long time, and I know Jody has, as well. We can attest to the fact that we've been on fire scenes with the old engine forty, where it ran out of water before tankers arrived. It happens. It is not a happy thing, but I'm not gonna sit here and mind you and say, oh, yeah, it's gonna be all sunshine and rainbows, because it's not. It, it will happen again. It's just a matter of time. Uh, I want to offer the best service possible, and we will offer the best service possible. But hauling twenty-five hundred gallons of water and then trying to get that tanker, the other tankers there, still is not perfect. A perfect world would be hydrants everywhere, you know? But a perfect world would be all kinds of things that you discuss in here and, and problems in the world you try to resolve. Um, it's just, you know, it would be wrong for me to sit here and tell you that it's gonna fix everything. It, it won't fix everything, but it will certainly make life better. You know, make it more efficient.
Dale, can I ask Tim a question?
Go ahead.
The response to a fire in the township would be to take the pumper tanker, because your tanker's not just a tanker, it has pumping capacity with it, which is, I think, a little bit different. You would, your three people would take that truck to the township and not the engine?
Correct. They would take that. That's what that truck is primarily designed for. Uh, obviously, a couple of years ago, you may remember in the winter of two thousand point two, or Christmas two thousand twenty-two, we had a fire in town, water main break, uh, we had called tankers in to supply water. Uh, so that, that truck will be useful around town in those terrible situations. But its primary role is to protect Union Township. It's an engine. It has firefighting capabilities. They'll have hose lines, hand lines out there we can go fight fire with. Uh, standard tanker does not have hand lines to fight fire with, does not have pumping capabilities the same as an engine does. What we've designed, what you've ordered for us, is an engine with a big tanker, you know, on the back of it. It'll hold all the firefighting tools we'll have, that we require. It'll hold the rescue tools we require. It is designed specifically to be the Union Township truck and handle anything and everything that we run into in Union Township to the very best of our ability. So it'll enhance our capabilities quite a lot once it arrives.
And Tim, the engine that went that day has what, a thousand gallons of water already?
One thousand gallons of water.
And the tanker would have?
Two thousand five hundred gallons.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have another question. Is there any way that, from who you ordered it from, you can contact and, and kind of push them along?
I wish there were. Honestly, I wish, I wish there were.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
My team hasn't been contacting them back before, but to try and work towards it all, but it's like anything else these days, it's, you know, it certainly is not a buyer's mind.
You can't write perfection, huh?
Yeah, yeah, you can't write perfection. This is, this truck, as, as you and I spoke earlier, this truck is actually spec'd out specifically to handle the calls that we have in Union Township area. It has, it will have a dump tank on the side of it. The old engine forty did not have a dump tank. That is the big swimming pool looking thing that we unfolded, the watering. So this has one on the side of it, where the old truck that we had, that we replaced, did not have that option. Um, it'll have the ability to draft much better. We could push, instead of pushing, what was it, fifteen hundred gallons a minute on the old truck, this will be able to run two thousand gallons a minute off a draft. So for the larger fires that we encounter in the fashion, you know, newer homes are pretty faster. They're pretty hotter and faster, newer construction. It's just the way it is. Uh, whereas a home like, Mr. Denon's, an older home like that, I'll use that example, because everybody seems to know where he lives, uh, that home will stand for a good forty-five minutes to an hour under, under a serious fire load. But you go to a newer section of town where they're building homes, and we will only have about five minutes, maybe fifteen at the outside, before it starts to come down on us. And I had, I, you know, we've gotten the opportunity to witness that firsthand in some of our newer homes that have had fires in them, where we literally are there within a matter of minutes of the phone call that we receive, and the roof is already gone and buildings are collapsing on itself. Uh, it's, it's kinda scary what's happened in newer construction. But, yeah, can we buy time? We're trying to buy time. Can we get these people a rush? I have people talking to them all the time, saying, hey, we need this, we need this. It's taken us over a year and a half just to get our, um, just to get the one thirty-five engine that was at your place, just to get it operational. Uh, the city council, when our engine, when our one forty, the frame cracked, the city council members literally did the fastest purchase I've ever seen on a fire truck. So, once again, thank you for that. Uh, we ended up with a fire truck within a matter of days, and what, within a week of that arriving, one thirty-five pump failed. It continued to fail. We've been battling that issue for well over a year and a half or so, and, uh, we finally think we have it all fixed and worked out. It pumped flawlessly at your scene until it ran out of water, which is, I will honestly tell you, that is one of the rare times that I've seen it pump flawlessly in the past year and a half. We have been fighting that truck for a long time, and it is now working.
The one thirty-five, how much water will it hold?
That's the one, the one thirty-five is one of those thousand gallons. So, and the other one, one thirty-four.
And you got the pump working now?
Pump working now. Everything seems to be working properly now. And the other truck, one thirty-four, that you purchased for us, that carries a thousand gallons of water, but we don't have enough staffing to run two engines at the same time. If, and, and that would, you know, I've, I've looked at it, cause of course, we as firefighters are saying, get us more staffing. We would love to have two, three more people per shift. But for every person you, you buy us per shift, cause let's face it, you're buying me another person per shift, that's gonna be about a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on where they end up in position. And that's per person. Um, can the city afford that? I'm gonna guess probably not right now, you know? Just because, oh, I, I understand the money has to go everywhere. We have a lot of projects, we have a lot of other, uh, areas in the state that need the funding. There's no way I can honestly ask you for the funding for all of those firefighters, because it would take at least three more firefighters per shift to outfit another engine. I, I can't do that to you, honestly, without looking back and saying, this is gonna cost way too much money. It's exuberant.
Well, we need police officers, and we need all this.
Exactly, exactly.
Anyway, Mr. Davis, I'm sure you're not satisfied. Uh, but what I can tell you is, obviously, they did what they could do with what they had, and we're going to improve that. And, Tim, you know, over the years, when we bought a new fire engine, I've gotten a lot of criticism over how much money we spent on a fire engine. I had one person tell me, you spend a lot of money for some, for Santa Claus to ride in it during the Christmas period. But I think you just explained to us why the money we spend on fire engines is really important when it's somebody has a fire. And so, Mr. Davis, I think they did, and Union Township did what they could do. And, uh, I appreciate you bringing it to us. We are, we've got a lot of information tonight, and I'll be very happy when the new, uh, pumper tanker comes in, and, uh, we'll have that to help in those situations.
I'm most satisfied with the, the idea of toning mutual aid as soon as you get the truck.
So the automatic aid is?
I, I think that's, should have been done when the, when the old pumper went down. That, but you don't know until you know.
Yeah, exactly. And we thought we would do the best by asking for it based on what our needs were as we're leaving the building.
Yeah.
And that follows, obviously, the type of things they give you orders.
Anyway.
But at least we worked it out.
Thank you. Davis, again, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for listening, and everybody got out of the house safe, and that's the main thing.
Yes, it is, always.
I think it's reparable.
Yeah. Mr. Woodrow, thank you for coming in.
Thank all of you.
We appreciate the cooperation between the fire departments, definitely, so.
Thank you.
You know, it's not, you know, yellows, screaming, and finding a solution, and working for it.
Absolutely.
That's what we get into doing. I, I think in the interim, we've, we've got that.
I think what Tim did, and the best that we can come up with now, and hopefully, we'll, 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 we'll get to it, best we will, we'll be happy, and we do, do, do.
Yes, Mr. Denon, you wanna close us here?
I want to point out that a lot of what Tim talked about is made possible by the relationship that has been built over the years with the surrounding department.
Yeah. All right, very good. Uh, we're ready for legislation. We have two ordinances that were previously introduced, starting with ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, third reading. Do we have a motion?
I move with place ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four on third reading.
I'll second that.
And discussion. Roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance resoning eight seventeen South Bates Street, sparkle two one three dash zero two eight dash three dash zero zero dash zero five three, three zero zero. Eight twenty-one, South Bates Street, sparkle two one three dash zero two eight dash three dash zero 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 dash zero five two zero zero. Nine oh three, South. Nine oh-three, South Fayette Street, parcel two-one-three dash zero-two-eight dash three dash zero-zero-zero dash zero-five-one dash zero. From R one C to CF and one zero-zero-four, South Fayette Street, parcel two-one-three dash zero-two-eight dash three dash zero-zero-zero dash zero-three-four dash zero. From B one to CF, Community Facilities.
Move the passage.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, you're probably sad we don't get to read all those numbers, Kelly. Ordinance number thirty, twenty-twenty-four, second reading.
I move we put ordinance thirty, twenty-twenty-four on second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty dash two thousand and twenty-four and ordinance amending floodplain regulations and repealing ordinance number five dash two thousand fifteen.
Okay, new legislation in writing, starting with resolution number R twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, first reading.
I move we put resolution R twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a
Yes, sir.
question about this. If I understood Mr. Dennon correctly, he's going to be talking with the commissioners and possibly getting a inspector from the county. Is that?
Basically, we would replicate the agreement that you have with Frost County, with Fayette County. And I would recommend that you have the relationship with both of them simply because, oh, Fayette County will be experiencing probably a lot of the same building pressures that we will. And if we can utilize them, that would be great. But I would say that, that you want to make sure that that option exists. The other thing that we want to talk to you about is, because we'll get more contractors than we're used to, is a registration system for contractors also.
Anything else, Mr. Blair?
No, I mean, I'm going, I'm going to abstain because I would want to see how his negotiations does come out with Fayette County. So that's, that answered my question.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Abstain.
Paul?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing just J. Dennon, City Manager, to accept the agreement with Frost County Building Department.
Okay, and the resolution number R twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, first reading.
I move we put resolution R twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, first reading.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I just think that we should get some acknowledgement and appreciation for the people that, from the people that use those services. You know, people getting free defense without cost to themselves and we're paying for it. And I think the taxpayers ought to get a thank you card at least or something from some of these people.
I don't know that I'm Sure it won't happen.
I'm advocating to make a law out of that, but it'd be nice if they would do that. That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Johnson?
Abstain.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-six dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing just J. Dennon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into an agreement with the Fayette County Commissioners for the provision of public defender services.
Uh, ordinance number thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I agree with Mark for taking the lead on this and I don't like to see mud drag down in the street either.
Oh, I think that's, is that the next one?
You're one ahead.
Am I getting ahead of myself?
Yeah, this is, one at the very bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Any discussion on ordinance number thirty-one?
So the, the changes are the windows, right? Is that the big change?
It makes the, it harmonizes the maintenance code for downtown with other pieces of legislation. It's a very small change to all three or four words.
Three words.
Okay. Yeah.
Clean it up.
Anything else? Roll call, Kelly.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-one dash two thousand and twenty-four and ordinance amending codified ordinance one fifty point zero-zero-six, building maintenance code for the downtown historical business district.
Finally, ordinance number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four, first reading.
I make a motion to replace ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four on first reading.
Second.
Now, Ted, discussion?
All right, I repeat. I think it's a good ordinance that we've needed. A lot of people park in their muddy yard. Not all people have a lawn. And then they drag all that mud out in the street and it gets in our sewers and makes a mess. Other people drive through it and they get all muddy in their nice clean cars. I think it's a good idea.
There you go. Mark, he's liked your idea. I do too. Any other discussion?
My only note.
Oops, okay.
It's a good idea. Relatively speaking, it is not, this is my complaint with many things. Probably a good idea to prohibit parking motor vehicles on lawns. This is a fourth degree misdemeanor. I don't, if you park something in the street, it is not a, wrongly, it's not a fourth degree misdemeanor. It is a minor misdemeanor. There is no potential jail time. Parking on the lawn, now, potentially you could face up to thirty days in jail. You will get a free ride at Vernon Standforce Palace. Just, I don't like imposing unnecessary potential criminal penalties upon someone. But in fairness to the way the legislation is written, it does require that in order to, I guess, be eligible for this potential crime, that you must have it parked for forty-eight hours or more. At least forty-eight hours. So it's not a situation where someone can, is, someone is prohibited from parking temporarily in a lawn to move things around, move things in and out of a garage perhaps. It is somewhat measured. I just have to, I think, my personal belief is that potential jail time is too much for what is essentially a parking violation.
Okay, anything else?
I just glanced over that. So I'm lifting Caleb. That means if somebody drives it home this evening and parks overnight, moves to work tomorrow, then the forty-eight hours.
That's correct.
So they can do that. Well, I personally think that, now, sometimes I had a relative that, that real overweight and she couldn't walk very far, so she'd take my grandma to groceries, pull up her yard. It was down in Nogga County out there. I personally hate to see a car parked like in the front yard. To me, that's about trashy even yet. As long as it's trash, but that's another issue, so. Anyway, that's just a little bit I got to add, which is much.
Anything else?
Does it, do you know if it impacts the people who live on Paint Street and they park across? It doesn't impact that? Okay. I wondered about that, but I didn't. Yeah.
We're gonna have to go mark tires again then?
No, we're, no, you can't mark tires.
I know what I was.
You cannot mark tires.
Well, I thought that's a way to keep track of them if we're.
No, I understand. I understand.
Okay, anything else? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
And Lynch?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Ordinance number thirty-two dash two thousand and twenty-four and ordinance prohibiting parking motor vehicles on lawns. We talked so much on this one.
That was an easy one to read, too.
I know, I know.
Mr. Chrisman, what do you have this evening?
Not a lot. Just liked to thank people who cleared up tonight. Certainly, well, it's gonna take time to get this deal worked out with Union Township. Because both those gentlemen came in to see me and, and we had a nice conversation.
Yeah.
In confrontation or anything. And I know them both very well. In fact, they've both been customers for years. It's, it's a concern. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Blair?
Does this have to be important?
Why would you care?
Well, we, we talked about flowers, wildflowers, wild blooms and so on. Well, there were these two Kentucky boys that went to truck driving school and got licenses and all. And they were driving down Interstate seventy-five between Cincinnati and Lexington. And they broke down, parked their truck on the berm of Interstate seventy-five. And highway patrolmen came along, pulled up behind them. And he went around truck, there wasn't anybody around the truck or anything, so he started writing a ticket pretty soon. These two drivers came down the hillside and they each had a handful of flowers. And highway patrolman says, what in the world are you boys doing? Just leaving this truck parked on a busy interstate like this and just going off and leaving it? And they said, well, this was our first trip after getting our licenses and our dispatcher said, no matter what happens, if you have trouble and you have to stop the truck, put flares in the back and flares in the front. So that's what we were doing.
Flares? Jimmy, you wanna take that back what you called me earlier?
That's all I have.
So we, good job. That's a good one, Ted.
How do you even?
You're speechless, right?
How do you follow that?
You can't follow that.
Um, just a reminder that it's back to school season, so be careful in the mornings and afternoons as you're driving around. I think you said high school starts tomorrow for courthouse. Yeah, my guys go back the following Monday, so just be mindful and be extra kind to little ones if you see them out in the belt. That's all I've got.
Very good. Mr. Schultz?
Well, I think, see, we had a good conversation about the fire department and hopefully will satisfy everybody to take care of the problems out in the township because that is extremely important and we want to make sure our fire department and our police department and even our service department all have the equipment they need to do the job they need to get done. So that is something that is very concerning. And I know we had a little discussion last week about the sidewalks. So I got to thinking about this. If we can't make the sidewalks good, maybe we can make them look good. Now, what do I mean by that? Maybe we need to go out and clean up the curbs a little bit. Some of the grass grown out along the street and alongside the, in the cracks of the sidewalk. Just clean up some of the grass and things that are growing out along the street. If you come down Plumbus Avenue into town, you're gonna notice, maybe there's no curb at all because the grass is all grown all over the curb. There might be a curb there, but you gotta, you have to find it, underneath the grass. If we could make the sidewalks look good or better than what they are without repairing them, that will go a long way because repairing them would cost quite a bit of money. So maybe if we can't make them good, maybe we can make them look good. And a little bit of effort, maybe take a certain block or two at a time and work on it one day a week or something like that. And that kind of thing. Just kind of clean up the town a little bit. You know, with the no parking in the, in the lawns and things of that sort. This all goes along with that same type of thinking. So maybe we could look into that in the future. So, but that's about all. I gotta thank everybody for coming. We do appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Blair? Nothing to deny, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I agree with Mr. Schultz that something needs to be done about sidewalks, the curbs and the gutters. I would gently remind council that it was not too long ago that we passed the ordinance where if a noxious weed grows on a sidewalk, that you too could be sent to jail for thirty days and be called a criminal, an M four criminal. But we, we did that. And if noxious weeds are still a problem, it makes me question once again why we attached a jail penalty to something that we don't wish to enforce. It makes me even question it more if we were to spend money on cleaning up the sidewalks for the people. So it really makes me question it. I also have to admit, the gentleman from Union Township had quite impeccable timing because just last council meeting, I think we declared it. Wasn't that one the firefighter night? I think we too much called it the firefighter night. And then I even said, perhaps now I have a bit of footed mouth problem. I said, uh, no one really complains about the fire department. And then immediately tonight, we have people complaining about the fire department. So I will not make that comment in the future, not to jinx us. Yeah, so thank you.
Yes, sir. I want to also mention, uh, Mr. Ed Helt. Ed, of course, covered our meetings for WCHO for a while when he was working there. He came in and sang for us a few times. He liked to play the harmonica, too.
Yes, he did.
And I used to kid him, when you can sing and play the harmonic at the same time, then, Ed, you got something. But he was a, very proud of being a veteran. He was the one who did the, um, the competitions in the schools to write about Americanism and so on. And so he was in the schools a lot. And so Mr. Helt is certainly a citizen that will be missed. And I agree with Mr. Dennon. Those kind of people don't come along every day and he will definitely be missed. And as Sylvia said, schools are starting. And I wanted to mention three of the students that I had last year who were seniors. One of them being Mr. Schultz's grandson. One gal and two guys, including Kayden, are now going into the military. I'm very proud of them for serving our country. And that, like I said, that includes one gal.
Yeah.
She's already been in basic training. And so I'm very proud of them for what they're doing in their lives. They're all, were excellent students. And could be sitting in college right now, but they decided they wanted to serve their country. And so I think that's really great and I'm proud of them, including Kayden and Schultz.
He's on September the third.
So anyway, I wanted to mention that too. Okay, with that adjournment, roll call?
Johnson?
I assume somebody needs to make a motion to us.
I'll make.
That's okay. I set you up there, Kelly.
You said roll call and I was just listening to that.
It's my fault.
You tell me.
Jim, and who seconds?
I did.
Sylvia, okay, so now roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chrisman?
What?
Haw?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned.